... to the United States of America. And to the Republic, which is vast, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please do roll call, please. Your first round, President Spencer Hextrow.
President.
Councilor Henderson.
President.
Councilor Cleveland.
President.
Councilor Hyden.
President.
Thank you. We'll start off this evening with a public hearing for Rice Lake Villas PUD Ordinance 22-7 and 22-8. And I'll officially call this public hearing to order. We have the proposed drafts in front of us. Ordinance 22-7, the senior living PUD draft. Somebody's please. Um, so these ordinance 22-7 would control the permanent uses on soul ID number five two zero, zero zero one nine, zero 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 five two, which would be for a senior living facility. Ordinance 22-8 is for property ID number five two zero, zero zero seven zero, zero zero six six zero. And this would be for a 10-unit workforce housing. Thank you. Would anyone in the council wish to have any details read off in either one of these draft copies? They're both very close. What is your wish?
I've read them.
Okay. I've read them.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we have the summaries for both 22-7 and summary for 22-8. And assuming that these require all separate approvals?
You can do all one.
Do whatever you like, yeah. Okay. Um, and Tony, can you quickly go through why this is important or why you need to do this step?
Sure. Um, so the application is for a planned unit development. And so part of that process is ordinance has then establish the uses and other restrictions that are allowed on those parcels, um, which will be set on those parcels until there may be another application to amend it or something, but it's something that is is set in stone and it will be what we use as a guide going forward for what is allowed down there.
Okay, because these are, um, 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 deviations from the current restrictions of the zoning that's currently in the residential one or whatever it is.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the two areas that were, um, lighting up on the restrictions is the density and the lack coverage. Just so everybody understands that that's what this ordinance does is it gives that flexibility for these two developments to go forward um, with just a little less restrictions as they normally would under the residential one zoning. Okay, are there any questions from the council regarding either of these ordinances? If not, I'll interrupt. Hold on one second. We'll go through the correspondence. Have there been any correspondence received by city staff regarding either of these proposed drafts?
No, we have not received any correspondence.
Okay. Next, we will move on to the public testimony. Um, this part of the public testimony is restricted to just these two amendments. Okay, if there's anybody that wishes to speak, I'll give you our five minutes, I guess.
Hi, my name is Lisa Walls, 3861 West Fisher Road. Um, I'm here today representing a group of people, um, hoping to speak on their behalf as well. Um, in regards to a few things, including the comprehensive plan, which does somewhat cover these ordinances, correct? Would you, would you consider them together?
I think I would say the ordinances are the ordinances and the comprehensive plan is the com-plan. Can I say that accurately?
Yes, the com-plan is a guide.
The ordinance is on the law.
Okay. So in regards to the ordinances, um, I, I agree and I saw on the agenda and I wrote this before the agenda. But before anything gets approved as a final, those ordinances need to be out of draft status. Otherwise, I would, I would think that would be an unethical, unethical use because they're, they're a draft, they're not in a final form. You would have to use the one that was approved back in December of 2024 to base the decision off of. Um, intentional or not, the fact that these have been in a draft form since February of 2024 uh, puts a bad perception out to the public. Um, this looks like the ordinance was specifically being amended in order to accommodate the submitter of the PUD. And again, whether this was intentional or not, this is what it looks like to many because of the people involved at that time. Um, I'd like to point out too that, you know, uh, I noticed a couple different things in the ordinance. Um, in 7.3, uh, C, it says that the application shall be submitted to the city clerk or treasurer or other authorized agent. I also noticed in 8.3 in the same, in, uh, in 8.3 that it then says there's a portion that it says the application be, should be submitted to the zoning person. So i- is that just a miscommunication or is there a word deviation that you need to change to make them the same? Or are we, how is, how is that working? It's just something I thought I'd bring up as, as a deviation to the verbiage.
Sure, so you've got two questions so far. We'll start with the first one about, um, what, what's, what's happening? Why do we have this draft coming in front of us? And I think that we owe it to all of you to be fully transparent on what had happened. Um, and, and so Tony, I don't know if you want to just summarize what had happened to the moment of discovery and what our attorney had advised us to do and.
So these draft ordinances have not, were drafted in February, March of this year. Um, we did not do anything with them until we have the final application. These are brand new ordinances. Um, so they're, they're in draft form because council has not approved them. They're not final until council will approve them.
There is one out there though, if you go out and look.
Are you talking about ordinance 22?
Yes.
Which is the zoning ordinance? Yes, that is.
And there is a seven and an eight in there that are from a date that was approved, let's see, online last approved, 12, nine was the 22. But are you saying that?
That's the, that's the zoning ordinance. These are sub-ordinances just specific to these.
The PUD. Alright, gotcha. I gotcha. I'm with you. Okay, and so yeah, the second question was just related to verbiage.
Thank you. Um, Tony, I, I don't have these.
I will have the ordinance pulled up in front of me right now because it's not an ordinance we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, I can look into it.
I can, I can speak to it. Generally speaking, so what you're referring to is ordinance 22, section seven?
Yes.
And section eight?
Correct.
Those aren't related to this, although some of it is.
Correct.
Because the section seven is how, where we spell out the planned unit development.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a coincidence that these happen to be, these are just dash seven and dash five, dash eight because our first PUD, our, our zoning map ordinance is 22-5.
Mm-hmm.
Our first PUD was 22-6. This is our second and third, so we're just going consecutively.
Okay.
It really doesn't have anything to do numerically.
And maybe that's where some of the confusion has come in.
Yeah.
A lot of this.
Yeah.
It looks like they go together. And I made the assumption, and I hate to use that word, but that they somewhat went together. Even though I knew that was separate from parcel, it was just convenient that it fit in the and everything else.
Yeah, that's section seven of the, of ordinance 22 does coincidentally spell out our process for planned unit development.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, I can see why that would be confusing.
Yeah. So I understand that, you know, a complete application, uh, a final application has to be submitted and it has to be submitted within 12 months of the initial preliminary plan. Um, a few questions here is, is there a history that is kept that can be published that shows the first time it was brought to you, the day it was preliminary approved, when the public notices were posted? Where were they posted? I would think that there would be some sort of audit trail for that. Is that anything that's available?
Yes, we do have all that information available. If you wanted to submit a data request.
Okay, do you have a specific form on, online?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's online or not.
Okay.
I believe it is.
Okay.
But otherwise I can email it to you about the work.
Oh, yeah, afterwards I'll give you my email, yeah. Um, I, I wanted to know that and one of the things that I noticed and the reason I'm asking about that is it says the application should be submitted. Um, it's a 7.4. The application should be submitted within uh, 12 months of the approv- approval of the PUD preliminary plan. And I know that this preliminary plan was approved February 20th of 2024. Now I noticed in the documentation of some of the architecture documents, if you look at the issued date, the issued date just from the architecture, uh, company was 2/25 and 2/26 of 2025. So I'm guessing you didn't get the information for the final until over 12 months. That's why I'm asking about that.
And, and I'm wondering if we're talking about the date that that applicant put in the application for the final?
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm asking is when, when was the final put in? Because the architecture dates on the, at the attached, you know, the big agenda that's online. If you look at the architecture information, it wasn't even issued until 2/25 and 2/26 of this year.
And I would have to say any drawings would be independent of whatever process is, is happening. Um, Tony, please feel free to correct me, but I, I'm just thinking that those drafts and architectures.
Because the policy lists that it has to be all combined together, that all of these things have to be submitted at one time.
Okay.
They're submitted, the application is submitted, correct? And then it's reviewed and if there's things that need to be changed or updated
Mm-hmm.
based on staff and professional reviews, then we go back to the applicant and they would adjust those and resubmit them to us.
And you would use then that re-submission date is what you're saying? So like if it was pre-approved or the preliminary was approved on say 2/20/2024 is, is the example. Um, and they, you ca- you went back to the person in May and said, we need to have this adjusted, yada, yada, yada. And then that restarts the 12 months from the pre-approved preliminary?
The application was received within the 12-month period. Yes, there are some times where there is some back and forth with the design process.
Right, but you're still not being clear in answering the question. So the question is, if it was submitted on 2/20 and you go back to the submitter in May and you say we have to have these adjustments made, they resubmit it. If, is it still part of the initial preliminary that was approved on 2/20? Or are you giving it a new date of 5/2024?
It's from when the preliminary is approved to when the application is submitted.
Okay. So it'd be from 2/20/2024 is what you're saying?
I'm, I'm pulling up the planning commission thing, just so I can make sure we're speaking correct dates.
Sure.
Because that's probably when the planning commission approved it.
Yes.
Again, there's a strictly recommendation. Council are the people that have the final approval.
Okay.
So council approved it February 26th of 2024.
Okay, so when can you, does it show you or can you see when it was, the final was submitted to you, what date that was?
I do not have all of that information in front of me right now because we're discussing the ordinances, not the application.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
Again, yeah, we can get you all of that information. I know it was submitted within the timeframe that was required.
Okay.
Otherwise we would not be here today.
Okay. I'm gonna take your word for that until I get copies of all of it and get a history.
Sure.
Um, that's kind of all we had right now, at least for myself. If others want to bring their stuff up, but that was mine regarding those ordinances. For now. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else regarding ordinances 22-7 and 22-8? Okay, at this time, I'll, we'll entertain a motion to close the public testimony. Have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Any further questions, comments from the council regarding ordinance 22-7 and 22-8? If not, all those in favor of closing the public testimony at this time, say aye.
Aye.
And you close. Public testimony has closed at 6:16 PM. Now at this point, we will have city council discussion and we can talk about suggested revisions, if any. Um, I can start off by saying that these are, um, very simple. These are in, in their attentions, uh, trying to give a little leniency on the density as well as the lot coverage. Um, I, I don't have any suggested revisions. Is there anything else from the council? Not from me.
I'm good with these.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to, uh, either approve the ordinance or not, and then we will be taking a roll call after, um, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 22-7 and ordinance 22-8. That's your word.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further questions or comments?
Good night. Okay, last amendment, do you have a motion to include the summaries?
Yes.
Of the ordinances?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 22-7 and the summary for that as well as ordinance 22-8 and that summary as well.
Thank you for the motion.
Support that.
Okay, thank you for the second. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of accepting ordinances 22-7 in the, um, summary and 22-8 in the summary um, signify by calling out your roll call vote. We will start with Councilor Hextrow.
Councilor Hextrow, aye. Councilor Henderson, aye. Councilor Gray, aye.
Councilor, aye. And Anderson, aye. Thank you. Now entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing portion. The motion. Have a motion, do I hear a second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you close, say nay. Now, we will move right into the PUD application, which is planned unit development. Um, this is for Rice Lake Villas Final Planned Unit Development. This is the time where we've already approved the preliminary a year ago. Now staff and the developer have had a year to work on this project. Now we come back and we make sure that the final matches up with the preliminary and that, um, it has stayed the course and that's what we're here for tonight. We have the Rice Lake Villas admin report, the final plan. Um, Tony, do you have, um, something you want to summarize in here?
Sure, you want me to just read through the admin report?
Sure.
Okay. So, this proposal is to consider a planned unit development final plan and ordinances for Rice Lake Villas LLC as follows, followed. 24 units, senior living at 4406 Martin Road, PID 520-0019-00052. And 10-unit workforce housing at 4394 Martin Road, PID 520-0070-00660. The summary is that PUD preliminary plan and rezoning was approved by city council on February 26th, 2024. An application for PUD final plan was received and accepted on February 26th, 2025. That review determined that the PUD final plan is consistent with the PUD preliminary plan. Prohibitive criteria for a PUD on the comprehensive plan. Page 19 lists the goal is to ensure a variety of lot sizes to create affordable development opportunities to best meet the needs of residents and businesses in Rice Lake. The objective is to encourage multiple family housing developments in areas with municipal sewer and water services to provide housing for all income levels. Uh, page 20, against the residential land use is intended to be used in specific areas of the city in close proximity to principal materials and collector rooms and in areas where municipal sewer and water are available. Page 75, planned unit developments may be allowed as an overlay to provide flexibility from zoning district standards for innovative developments meeting the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan. Ordinance 22 in section 7.1, planned unit developments are generally intended for application to larger and/or unique sites where a flexible approach to zoning regulations would facilitate more efficient use of the site and protection of natural resources achieved through clustering development and other innovative site planning and design techniques. Section 5.503, residential one zoning district is intended to accommodate a wide, wide range of residential activities on large lots including single-family and two-to-four-unit residential buildings. The PUD proposes departures of the following. Density, proposed 24-unit senior, senior living and 10-unit apartment building and then impervious surface up to 25% is allowed. At 4406 Martin Road, there's 34.7% proposed. And 4394 Martin Road, there is 70.4% proposed. Public services, utilities, traffic and recreational amenities. Rice Lake Public Works Supervisor Shane Downey has confirmed water and sewer are available and can support the proposed project. St. Louis County Engineer Vic Long stated he had no comments or concerns about the project. Concerns about the increased wear on Stavenger Road is addressed by a condition that Stavenger Road be paved according to city specifications from Martin Road to Luzerne Road. Rice Lake Fire Department Chief Amy has stated the proposed plan is sufficient to accommodate emergency traffic and operations and see both proposed facilities include indoor and outdoor common spaces for recreation. Under open space, the proposal includes designated open spaces sufficient for the proposed use. Both plans show large backyards with space to accommodate residents. And for relationship to the neighborhood, the neighborhood consists of single-family and multifamily residential uses. The proposed plan does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Increased traffic will be limited to primarily Martin Road and the northernmost section of St. Anthony Road. Under recommendation, at an informational meeting on March 18th, 2025, planning commission voted unanimously to recommend a city council approval of the planned unit development final plan. And for conditions, according to the findings of facts approved on February 26th, 2024, the following conditions conditions are recommended. Stavenger Road shall be paved according to city of Rice Lake specifications from Martin Road south to Luzerne Road.
Thank you, Tony. Excuse me. Okay, we also have in front of us the final plan drawings. I presume everybody's had a chance to look over these. Any questions or comments regarding the admin report of the final plan? Every, everybody had a chance to review compared to the preliminary plan, any concerns, anything to draw out?
I have nothing to discuss.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Rice Lake Villas admin report, the final plan, as well as the final plan drawings.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Also good.
Any further questions or comments? If all those in favor of approving both the final plan as well as the drawings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you close, say nay. Congratulations. Moving on, we will now pick up to where the normal council we would start and, uh, we are at, if anybody wants to leave at this time, time, feel free. Otherwise, I welcome everybody to stay. Right, I will open this up for public discussion. It's listed on the agenda. I'll give you five minutes.
See me again? Do you want me to name and address again?
No, that's okay.
Alright, good. Um, I apologize for the glasses. I can't see you without them, but I can't see just any of them. So kind of a catch 22. I requested you have five total. Um, I know that you just heard me and you're gonna hear me again. And what, what I'm gonna talk about now, and I may go more than five minutes, but I know there's people who are willing to surrender their five minutes to me. Um, if that's a, you know, I, I know that's, there is nothing in Robert's rules that says that cannot happen. Um, so what I'd like to talk about is kind of all of this PUD stuff kind of brought everyone together and learned things that we didn't know, especially myself. Um, and all the research and everything that I did and trying to find things out. I learned a lot from this comprehensive plan that was put into place in 2020. Um, just some things I want to bring up and I think that, you know, with this PUD and the fact that a lot of people didn't know the specifics, um, this is an educational opportunity for us to talk to you guys about what we see in that plan, um, five, six years later. Um, so the comprehensive plan, I'd just like to bring up, that the comprehensive plan that is on the website is, uh, there's two. There's one from 2020, 2020. And then there's actually an amendment for 2022 that's still in draft form. And so you may want to decide what you're gonna do with that and get it out of draft form and have an actual, you know, just one out there that's been amended. Um, I was looking at my pages and notes. Um, one of the other things was with the comprehensive plan was I had kind of asked around, you know, how did this survey come about or how did people get to answer the survey? And in the comprehensive plan, it answered that question for me. Um, one of the, the main things, it was the community survey was available online in September of 2019. Um, questions on the survey, ask basic demographic data and the respondent community's uh, assets and weaknesses, visions for the future and investment opportunities and priorities. Approximately 350 responses were collected. Responses help form the goals and objectives of the plan. Um, a few questions that I had coming out of that was, uh, how was the survey communicated or how was it communicated to people that there was this survey online? Uh, was one of my, my main questions. Because I didn't, I don't recall and people that attacked you don't recall getting anything in the mail, but says, hey, there's a survey.
Believe back then we had a circulating newspaper, quarterly newspaper. And I thought that we had advertised on there.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't remember anything more.
I, I don't either. I mean, I'd have to dig into it to see. But I, I believe we sent out postcards and I thought we actually sent physical paper surveys out to people, too, but I don't remember for sure.
Yeah, that's not listed in the comprehensive plan. Yeah, that's not listed in the comprehensive plan and that was, if, if that was actually done. I don't recall and, and multiple people that I've talked to don't recall ever getting anything in the mail. I'm the kind of person that I'm annoying. I filled that out and it, it would probably be an essay. So, um, bringing that to the attention, I also noticed that there was a pop-up meeting to raise awareness and that was held on the, at the Halloween Fire Hall event. You don't have kids, you're not going to that event. You know, and it's pop-up, so it wasn't advertised for people to go there, so the, the response that you were gonna get was very limited. Um, with that said, um, I did some analysis on the number of results that you got along with the population that we had in twenty eighteen. That was the most recent as far as uh, verified data. So in twenty eighteen, seventy, seventy-five percent of the population was over the age of nineteen. With that said, my, my, my next question will, will affect the results of this is when this survey was out there, was it per household or was it per adult in the household?
I, once again, you got me. I, I don't know if I can answer that.
Okay, cause if, if, for example, if it was per household, um, three hundred and fifty responses out of the households of seventeen forty-nine is only twenty percent of a response. Which to me, you know, one-fifth is not very high when you're looking to ask people how they feel about their city. Um, if it goes by per adult, again, based on being over the age of nineteen and seventy-five percent, it's only eleven percent of the people in the city. That's, that's hardly anything. It's, you know, very, it's just over a tenth. So I, I feel that these results, as expensive as these are, I do, these surveys are, I do feel that they need to somewhat be revisited uh, because of the fact that there was such little population at the time that actually responded to it. Um. In the, in the comprehensive plan, one of the things that really stood out to me was the vision for Rice Lake. And that vision states the city of Rice Lake, with its recreational amenities and rich rural character, strives to provide a well-balanced, secure and enjoyable living environment for citizens of all ages. As a friendly, quiet, family-oriented community, the citizens of the city appreciate and respect the needs of their neighborhood, their neighbors. Families will raise their children in safety, peace and quiet, away from the congestion and noise of the city. The city will work together with residents to sustain moderate commercial, residential and recreational growth while making sure not to alter the existing character of the city. Um, proactive decision-making and the provision of services on the part of the city will maintain the existing quality of life. And to me, those last couple of sentences about, you know, maintaining and existing, I get we're gonna expand. Everybody knows we're gonna expand. And if you look at the comprehensive plan, we're not gonna expand very much, which would make most of us very happy. But I just think we don't wanna see massive growth to the point where people don't wanna live here anymore because they're crowded. You know, I, I, I know for myself, I've been out here twenty-three years, twenty-two years, and I like the fact that I have some space. I can only see my neighbor when there's no leaves on the tree, you know? I, I think many of us have moved out here for the space and the quiet. Um, again, too, one of the, the, on page eighteen of the comprehensive plan under land use, again, the one of the goals is to preserve the rural wooded and residential character of Rice Lake through zoning regulations ordinances and site design standards. Um, and I, I, again, I, I really harp on the whole fact of the rural wooded area. Cause we don't wanna see huge apartment complexes, um, you know, coming up and more than two, two, three stories high. Those kinds of things, you know, for, for many of us, we don't wanna see that. And I get that there's certain areas per this that are, are section to be for different reasons, whether they're commercial, residential, et cetera. Um. Something else I noticed in the comprehension plan was, uh, page seventy-seven. The action plan worksheets will be updated on a regular basis as part of other city processes such as annual budgeting or project prioritization sessions. The action steps and timeline sections of the worksheets are intended to be flexible and adaptable over short periods of time. So changes to these sections do not require a formal amendment to the comprehensive plan. The goals, however, are high-level, long-term goals. Changes to specific goals will require an amendment. There's been nothing amended on that. None of these action plan worksheets have been filled out. The last date in there is from twenty, it says twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, and it's one goal. Nothing else, just the one goal. Um, so I'm kind of wondering, you know, in all fair and transparency, if this is, if this is something that the planning and zoning or the council is looking to kind of pick up on to review these things. Um, additionally, you're just gonna get tired of me talking.
We'll give you one more minute.
All right. So, uh, last to be said is we know that you want us to use the website. Um, the website, I've learned kind of tricks of the trade, but I think there needs to be more transparency on the website. Um, a- and I, I think, and this is me saying aye, even though we are a smaller group of people that do believe the same as I do. Um, the council should represent all constituents of the city, not just specific. It should be completely nonpartisan. Things should be as transparent as possible for everyone in the city. And I think that's something that many people feel we're lacking is, you know, processes are, we're told trust the process, that the process can be broken or it seems broken. So those are things that we brought up and someone just asked me to bring up before I came up here. Um, I know this kind of, who's gonna pay for the tarring of the Stavanger Road or the pavement?
We'll get to that later on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. I have a bunch of notes to, right? I'm sorry. No, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay, have we received any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the March twenty-fourth council meeting minutes as well as executed claims from March twenty-fifth to April fourteenth totaling one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred forty-three dollars eighty-nine cents. I will entertain a motion in our ready council. You made that a little bigger. I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I got.
You didn't catch your second from John.
Oh, oh, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye and opposed, say aye. Moving on to the financial report. Can you summarize this for us, please?
So for month ending March third first, twenty twenty-five, in our checking account, we have two million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. In investments, we have one million, six hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-two cents for total combined cash of three million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the building and zoning department's.
All right, in March, we had one land split. We have a commercial principal structure, a commercial remodel, a residential addition to an accessory structure, one residential demolition, three home addition, and five over-the-counter permits. A grand total of thirteen permits issued for a total valuation of five hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Total fees collected, six thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Any questions for Curly? Thank you. It's always nice to see those numbers go up around this time of year. Next, we have our public works.
Starting with roads throughout March, um, the temperatures are most part day relatively mild. Would show off a lot of, or most of the frost to work its way out of the roads, resulting in roads to be quite soft, obviously wet. Which then leads to the potholes and the roads getting pounded out. I guess with that, this time of the year. Um, with that being said, we are currently transitioning all of the equipment from the winter into the spring, summer. Um, slowly moving the snowing, little attachments from the equipment, starting with removing the snow wing um, on the grader and installing the roller packer. Um, fast forward a little bit, this, from when this report was made, it was on April eleventh. Um, the grader's been out on three separate, separate occasions, fixing areas, um, and had some of the worst frost damage. Um, and as of today, it's been probably twelve or fourteen days. As the roads continues to, continue to dry up, you'll see the grader out more and more as we make a push there to get everything finalized and graded before the chloride season starts. Um, Blacktop side of things, once Northland, I get word from them that the, uh, the the, uh, next plant is open, we'll be out patching all the potholes on the Blacktop roads. And then there'll be a bigger patch, but the water main break that was, um, on second avenue north that happened in January. Um, the park, um, it still can, it still, uh, is closed, I guess, as of this moment right now, where there was issues that had been brought up recently and multiple things ended to be corrected on the playground, which we'll be taking care of tomorrow. Moving on to utilities, throughout March and the early portion of April, we've been focused mainly on getting things set up for the water sampling stuff that we're taking care of now. That Duluth is no longer going to be doing for us. These tests are required by the Minnesota Department of Health and consist of the bacteria and chloride residual test. Um, Rice Lake employees will be pulling all of these samples on that pre-selected high flow areas. Rice Lake has recently purchased a new chloride tester that will allow us to keep that portion of the testing in-house. And for the bacteria side of it, those samples will be taken and then shipped to R M D Environmental Laboratories, which is in Virginia, Minnesota. Um, with a number of buildings connected to city water, the sort of department is requiring this testing to be done twice a week.
Thank you. Any questions for Shane? I just have one question on the chlorine tester. Tell us about the process now that you, have you done it yet?
Yeah, today was actually the first day we did testing.
What does that look like?
It's, it's basically, you stick, it's like a salt packet basically in there. So it turns the water pink, the darker the pink, the more chlorine is in it. Here, we're testing for poor chlorine residual. You obviously don't want too much and you don't want too brittle.
And then do you submit that data electronically or?
Yes, yep, that goes, so we do a chain of command or custody form, when we do the bacteria and then put the number for the back or for the chlorine on that same form that goes with the bacteria test. When the lab does the test, that's bacteria, they fill out the results on that and then that's submitted to the Minnesota Department of Health.
So the bacteria sample, that doesn't come back, obviously, at the same time. I mean, we've got a, a
It, it shouldn't take long. I, I don't, maybe a day or two, I guess. It's only in Virginia, so it's the same day.
And do we courier that sample to Virginia?
The lab is actually even come to pick it up. They're in Duluth quite often picking up samples for other.
Okay. What are we testing for chlorine?
Um, mainly, mainly commercials, so it's a high flow area, so a quick trip is a really good one because they have obviously car wash.
Yeah.
Lots of high flow. Schools would be a really good one. Any big, any big commercial areas.
Any questions?
Just to comment on the roads, I guess, and like to repeat something Mayor Warner used to like to use, uh, especially this time of year, excessive speed on gravel roads is what causes washboard. I'm sure.
Thank you, Shane. Next, we have fire department. Mark?
All right, for March, we had nineteen calls for service, thirteen medicals, two lysis uh, one injury accident, one structured fire, one carbon monoxide alarm and one power line hazard. Uh, we also completed our mandatory O F F P testing. Um, and then, uh, we moved on to, uh, part of our leadership took time and reviewed and updated the city's, um, C I P based on department's current asset, uh, assessment of needs. And then we discussed that during the last week's, uh, quarterly financial meeting. And then, uh, wildland fire prevention and mitigation, we're coming into that part of the season now. Um, obviously, things are wet today, but they will start drying out, um, so just use caution. Uh, continue to look at the D N R's burning restrictions and burning permit website. Um, this time of year, we get called out for that quite frequently, um, and rightfully so, so, uh, just, uh, do your due diligence in staying up to date with that, but, uh, also in regards to this, um, residents on the Lonely Pine Development reached out, uh, with their wildfire concerns, a lot of it uh, regarding the, uh, dead spruce trees from the spruce bud infestation and, uh, the potential risk of uncontrolled wildfire in their area. So we were able to connect, uh, that development of houses with the, the county firewise coordinator Gloria Erickson. And then she in turn, uh, was able to have, set up a meeting with those, uh, a couple of residents that had reached out and, uh, uh, they're gonna conduct a wildfire prevention and mitigation demonstration up there. And it's for those, those neighbors within that development and then set up a wood chipping event for those residents as well. Um, these resources were all made available because of the productive efforts that we took as a department and city collectively um, last year in developing a mitigation action plan, which the firewise co- coordinator needed in order to access grant funding to support these types of projects within the community. Um, so just be aware that we're not using city tax dollars for just fifteen residents on the Lonely Pine drive. Um, these, these are grant funds and, uh, we will continue to work uh, with residents as these requests come in, um, in other areas of the city. Now, that being said, um, later on in the agenda tonight, uh, we're looking to do a community-wide drop-off point. Um, probably on either a single weekend or two weekends, um, that hasn't been decided yet. But, uh, we're property owners that wanna take the initiative to kind of clean up their properties of down woody debris. Um, even if they wanna trim some trees or take some trees down because of it and then transport that to this, that drop-off site. Um, there will be grant funding to dispose of that, uh, woody debris. So that should take place in early fall sometime, um, so we have all spring and summer to, to get to work and then load up your trailers and bring it up to where the site will hopefully take place. Um, but yeah, so I think that's all I got.
Any questions for Mark?
Yeah, we just wanted, we were just wondering where Lonely Pine is.
The northeast section of Rice Lake.
So that's a wood chipping event.
That one is, yes.
That spent that you were speaking of in the latter, is that wood chipping as well or is that?
That would just be, uh, contractors coming in to haul the, the reefer.
Okay, so if there was another resident, say in this room, that would like to have a chipping event on their road, what would they do?
Uh, they would reach out to the city and the city can then in turn get them in contact with myself and I will again contact, uh, get them in contact with our firewise coordinator to start that process. And I will again contact, get them in contact with our Firewise Coordinator to start that process.
If you know, can all the residents keep those wood chips? Like, do they spread them or do they?
That I don't know. I'm guessing they haul those away. I'm thinking they chip them into the back of a forestry service truck.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Pancake breakfast by Saturday.
Oh, say a little bit about, say just a little bit about that if you don't mind, Mark.
Yeah, so Pancake Breakfast is Saturday, the twenty-sixth at the Fire Hall on Martin Road. I believe it starts seven AM.
There, there is a flyer hanging up on the bulletin board. There's a flyer hanging up on the bulletin board in the vestibule there.
Perfect. Check it out.
We have to get the resale ticket. Mark, can you buy tickets?
You can buy tickets at the door, but there should be a website or an online ticket sales keys on that player up there as well. Our auxiliary plans the event, so I'm not necessarily involved as, as much, but we help make all.
And it's a great breakfast. I've encouraged you all to go, go make breakfast that morning.
And I think if you donate a certain amount of money, they do include two breakfast tickets.
Probably.
Yeah, the profit. For the Firehouse.
Yeah, it, so the auxiliary raises the funds and then they support the different things that we we do, whether it be equipment or they couldn't pass the auxiliary that purchased in place as this program that supports the firefighters as well.
Thank you, Mark. All right, next we have the animal control. Farley, can you take this one too?
Oh, sure.
I like what you did to the report, by the way.
I'll be glad. Trying to be more, just give you as much information without it being a novel. So it is a little bit repetitive because we've looked at everything from February already. But then this now adds in the fees that were paid tied into the case. So and because I'm who I am and I have to put in there the dogs and cats that get adopted. I think that's cool. So I have been following up with Animal Allies just to kind of get an update on, on what's happening with these animals that have been taken in from Rice Lake that we're paying for, so.
I like that piece.
Yeah, that's my favorite part. So one kind of interesting thing to note is the case number twenty-five-three-five from March ninth. They did not know that that dog was pregnant. It was just dropped off as a stray. And then they showed up to the shelter the next, like two mornings later and there was a puppy in there with her. So mom and puppy are now in the, in a foster home, not in the shelter any longer. Will be adopted out when the time is right. Another kind of strange one, I got a call from Jessica, our previous animal control officer. She was actually out of town and her person who was there working for her had said somebody just dropped off a dog. So people still think that she's the kennel, even though she didn't really have people dropping dogs off to her before, but now she does. So I was able to go make contact with the owner, talk to them. They got their dog back. It was fine. They actually lived right nearby there. No idea who brought the dog there, but all was well there. A little Chihuahua that was found on West Fire Road was reclaimed. And I, if there's no fee for A A S showing here, I just haven't received the update yet. So we haven't been billed and I don't have any more to report on that one. In that case, depending on what information we get, we can then bill out or send a letter. I just don't have owner information at that point. And then just in last week, Mayor Hurst and I got to chit chat right early in the morning and with for another resident's dog that I have learned that since has run a few times. So just had a conversation and sent a letter out essentially to let them know that the dog is licensed. Just to let them know to keep them on their property.
I had heard from this resident who had kept this dog overnight that he was nervous about reporting it to Rice Lake because he was so afraid that that dog was going to go to another bad place. And, and so maybe you could talk about what happens to those pets when they're claimed. It's great, but when they're not claimed, what happens to them?
So if they're brought into Animal Allies, Animal Allies keeps them, there's a state mandated five business day strait hold. So Animal Allies hangs on to them for that period of time. Trying, they post on social media, most people generally know around here, call Animal Allies if you're missing a pet. Or some folks will call here. And they, then once that strait hold is up, Animal Allies then will spay or neuter the dog, give them all their shots, or cats. Spay, neuter, give them all their shots and then they're in, put into their adoption program. Animal Allies, to my understanding, is a no kill shelter. I believe we don't have any kill shelters around here, except for extreme situations, obviously. If an animal's really sick or completely unadoptable or something along those lines, I would imagine we might have to make that hard choice. But yeah, most of the animals end up being rehomed ultimately with a microchip and neutered or altered and all their shots.
Okay. Any questions for Carly? Just for, for everybody else, the cost for one, one pet, right, to end up at Animal Allies is three hundred and eighty-five dollars, whether it's a cat or a dog?
For the full five days, so it's a daily charge.
Okay.
And then depending on what they need as well.
Exactly. Three hundred and eighty. So it could be one.
That's for the full five.
Full five, exactly. Okay, so all of these, these three pets were five day for five day holds?
Yes, and I believe that is, no, it is the same for dogs or cats. So yeah, and so these were actually all young too, so these all of these animals had to be spayed or neutered, have all their shots, get a microchip in them. And they were held for that full five days, so that's not an unreasonable.
So that's three eighty-five included, the spay?
All of that.
All of that, okay.
That was our full bill from Animal Allies for handling that dog from in the door to out the door.
Okay. Thank you, Carly.
I may have noticed Jessica's name is still on the spring newsletter.
It should not be.
No.
Yeah, it's been off the last couple.
Last one, it just said it has the phone number, doesn't have any.
And it's my phone number.
Okay, next we have the sheriff's report.
So the report that I have is for the first quarter, which is January, February, and March. For this quarter, for this year, it was five hundred and sixty calls in total. Highest being traffic calls and then the second being medical calls, which is consistent with the Fire Department's report. Business checks and paper services are lowered, but at the same time, self-initiated activities are higher. So that could just be that people are calling at different things. Realistically, traffic stops are also self-initiated, so when you combine that with business checks and site buzz, everything is fairly high for proactivity. The most frequent calls, I'm not sure if they're dispatch calls, but based off the locations, Martin Road and Rice Lake Road, forty-eight hundred block of Rice Lake Road and the thirty-nine hundred block of Rice Lake Road. Realistically, those are probably traffic stops, just because of where they are. And then additionally, the forty-seven hundred block Howard Geneeson, which is a thirty zone, so probably another traffic stop data point there. Compared to going back to twenty-twenty-two, five hundred and sixty calls total, which is the highest. And consistently, it looks like calls for service have been going up.
They've been going up because of more stops or more residents or because there's more criminal activity?
It looks like more stops in general, but I couldn't say for sure.
We've been meeting, just for everybody that's here, we've been meeting with St. Louis County Sheriff's Department on two or three things by now. And we're, we're just looking for good reporting and a consistent presence in our, in our area here. So I will apologize for anybody that has noticed that presence and they have perhaps gotten pulled over. That unfortunately is what happens when we ask for more people. We, we ask for more presence and the way we feel it is people get pulled over. But it, it has been a request from many people. We have a lot of residents that are concerned about speeding in our, in our city. And so we would like people, if you're noticing that on your roads, to please call nine-one-one and report those, those traffic or fast traffic incidences. And then get someone out there to patrol those areas a little bit more. And that would be how you can get someone out there.
I'm on the West Calvary Road, I want to give crew, they stopped three people on there that were speeding, just wants to just giving a kudos to them, whoever doing it, you know, I hear you guys stopped two or three people and the rest of them get the hands. Years ago, they used to sit on there Friday night and they'd stop and stop and stop and then they'd slow down for about a week or two. But it does help.
Thank you. Any questions for?
What is paper services? Is that like warrants, warrants or?
So paper services are order protections, subpoenas, stuff like that, just papers that we go and take here, use this type thing.
I like this new report. I like it a lot.
Yeah, I don't do the reports, but I do, I do read them off and then sue to our analyst. He, he puts them together, so.
Well, they're always doing a fine job. Now, we also have a, a report that it's not included in our agenda, but it was just all of the activity, the addresses and just kind of a I'm sorry, a little summary of the address with a little description of what kind of activity that happened. And that for, for me anyway, gives, gives a good idea of what's going on in our community. And we, we just didn't really know what, what was happening. So the, the traffic calls, the medical calls, the business checks and the self-initiated calls are the ones that we're looking at on, on this report here. So we'll just watch these quarterly. We'll get a quarterly report and then we also get like a monthly report, I believe, is, is how it's been going on. So thank you. We appreciate everything that you do for us and the presence in our community.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any further questions on that from the council? Okay, we will move into new business. We have Duluth Water Surcharge, a letter from City of Duluth Public Works and Utilities Jim Benning. In accordance with our water service agreement dated December twentieth, two thousand, you are being given notice that a water infrastructure surcharge has been established effective May first, twenty-twenty-five. Deathstone and Resolution twenty-five P U C dash zero-zero-one, which is enclosed. This surcharge will be applied to all rate classes. They held a public hearing regarding this water infrastructure surcharge on March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five and approved the surcharge during a regular meeting following the hearing. And then the twenty, the Resolution twenty-five P U C dash zero-zero-one describes the, the rate category of the surcharge. Rice Lake, it looks like ours is point eight zero-five. For other communities, it's kind of rate and not communities, but different rate schedules that they have, rate categories. I remember being told that, I wonder why our rates are different? We haven't received an explanation on the different rate classes that they're describing here?
Don't think so. Well, I think the original, we might be.
Oh, please, actually, Rob, if you don't mind coming up so everybody can hear you.
So Herman Town, Proctor, and Rice Lake were given rates based on their usage compared to, and not, and the city of Duluth is on it separate, but because it was based on their usage and then from there it went on percentage of usage. So we're all being charged the same, but our fee structure will be different based on our actual usage.
Okay, thank you. That means sense.
Yep.
I'll just stay there. Yeah, if you want to just stand down for a second, if anybody, questions on the surcharge? I think we had an estimate, estimate, I don't know if that has changed from earlier.
Actually, it has. Based on that letter that we received, the rate is a little bit different, not a, not a lot. What it calculated out to be for us based on twenty-twenty-three usage was four dollars and forty cents per user or per household, I should say, or or per connection, a month. And with this fee that they just sent us, it actually goes down to like four twenty-five for this year. But since they're not actually applying it till, to May, we have four months where we're not being charged. So it actually will drop down for twenty-twenty-five a little lower because we're not paying for the full year. We, I calculate it, excuse me, calculate it out for the full year. But now that it's not going to be applied until May first, we can take those first four months out and go from there.
Okay.
So I still do recommend the rate structure just because it'll, but if we went across the board, then those commercials, businesses that are using anywhere between five and sixty thousand gallons of water are getting charged the same as someone who's using less than two thousand gallons. So it just, as we do our rates, it just seems appropriate to also do the, this infrastructure charge.
Sure, yeah. That is not part of our discussion tonight for approving the fee schedule. It is?
Yeah, so it's the last, last page in there.
The one that's filled in?
Yeah. You should be able to, when you're on there, there shouldn't be a row anything. I just tweeted it on this, otherwise I do have to print it out.
Okay, no, I got it. I'm due.
I got it, but it's upside down.
Are there any further questions for Robin before she says go? Thank you, Robin. From the council, we have heard the request from Facility Department on approving the rate structure for implementing this surcharge. Makes sense? All right, are there any questions, concerns regarding the tiers that has been laid out for us? If not, I'll entertain a moment. Take the motion to approve that proposed fee schedule. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
One second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the proposed surcharge tier rating, say aye. Aye, in opposed, say nay. Moving on, we have the CPR contract with First Community Foundation.
Yeah, so this is what has been discussed at the Duluth Area Township meetings. Received a grant. Received a grant. And so they wanted to offer, um, they're starting with the CPR first. Um, but they wanna up, open it up to communities, so basically we would just hope. Meeting here. Um, they would have their personnel come in and train and it's open for any, anybody that wants to come and get CPR training for free.
Is there? I mean, is this one free session, is there a number of people living here?
Um, I would assume there is, I don't know that the contract necessarily spells it out.
And there's not a date for the seat?
No.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we have to do the contract first and then they'll kind of arrange the logistics with us, where I'm sure they'll look and see. How many people they think they can fit into the hall and how many fingers they have. But I think. All right, I read this. Last week, I think we just promote it, they'll actually do all of the scheduling and everything. Yeah, we'll provide adequate, adequate space. Or dates, the training dates and times, and then assist with promotion.
This is a great opportunity for the community, this is for the community to be able to receive. Um, the CPR training and mental health, cardiac and substance abuse emergency training preparedness. Um, it's free.
It's free, that was my question.
Yeah, this, this is free, um, if anybody's trying to get a certificate through like the American Red Cross to be CPR certified, it is. Really expensive and it's prohibitive for like church groups or. Uh, whatever group you can think of that's trying to have somebody CPR certified on staff. And to have to pay, I think it's like two hundred dollars the last time I had looked and it's like. It's so expensive and then I believe it's only a year long or two years maybe, two years. It's very expensive, so this is a great opportunity. I don't remember what kind of certificate you actually get with this. But it's the training that's important and, and, um, if anybody has ever. Had someone that they loved or knew nearby that had a medical emergency. You call nine one one, you've got that window of time that you hope that that person can. Have somebody around them that can respond to them before. Yeah, professionals get there and I think that's what this is about, is getting that community prepared for those events. All right, any questions? Regarding the CPR contract? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to be. Approve the contract with First Community Foundation.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Thank you, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of accepting this contract with First Community Foundations, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
I think in the, in the past, we did have some training here and I think they would have about eight people in the, in the training session. It depends on how many we get signing up. Maybe have to have more than, more than one date. And also, uh, I see our A D B is not here.
No, we have a dead battery, so it's on the order.
So everybody's hanging there.
It's been in my office and. It just be, it's beeping like crazy, so I can't, we can't just. Even leave it with the battery in there hoping it would maybe work without us all going insane, so. If anyone needs it, it is in my office, you pop that battery in real quick and.
That's yours.
All right, next we have Schultz property firewise drop off site.
Uh, just going back to what I looked to earlier with the, uh, community wide. Twenty different drop off sites. Um, what we'd like to do is use the new Schultz, uh, road property as that location. It has gates on it so that we can close it up at the end of the day and we aren't gonna just receive garbage. Um, it gives the community a chance to see the new, uh, training center as well, um. But, uh. Out of our end of responsibilities, uh, we would have to staff that location, um, for the hours that it would be open. And then, uh, um, grant funding again. Covers the cost of all the removal and. Uh, I'm not sure i- if we're staffing it with, uh, an actual city employee that. Makes an hourly wage if that is like in-kind service donation towards that, uh, grant agreement. Or, um, if that's just something that the city covers. We can approach that side of things between, uh, city staff versus a volunteer from the fire department or something later on too, so. There would be some work that needs to be done, uh. Foundation wise, where the city or the public works department has kind of expanded, um. Some area up there, some, uh, area on in class five. Would need to be put into that location in order, uh, to have a solid foundation for people to drop or drive in and drop off that stuff. Uh, just to keep the main area open. Um, but I've already talked with Shane about that and, uh, it seems to think that that's not an issue.
Any questions for, for Mark?
Is there an issue with, there's a quarantine for home? Is that an issue?
It, it shouldn't be because everything's still remaining local.
Team still here is still. Free access.
Yeah, yeah, so it would just be, you know, the, the notification would go out to our. Community residents, um. As a drop off site. There's really not much of a concern with, you know, the people from Geneaithen or Lakewood or Canelshawer to bring their stuff here. Because they're all, uh, firewise, community areas as well. Uh, so the grant funding would, would cover all of that as well.
I guess if there's an Emerald Ash or Titan in the pile, it doesn't make any difference if it's a lonely pine.
It's all here already, so.
Uh, maybe Bob was volunteering to inspect every piece of wood.
Any further questions for Mark? Okay, um, looking for a motion to approve a Schultz property for our drop off site.
Thank you.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? I'll support. Thank you, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, in opposed, say nay. Now, moving on to Tony's favorite topic. The lawn care contract for twenty twenty five. We have, uh, the greenscape estimate. As well as Duluth lawn care estimate. And thank you to whoever put together the summary for both of those on one page, that's really helpful. So we have an estimate total for all services for greenscape, which includes lawn treatment. Um, for, this is, uh, what they call organic, and then there's a non-organic weed control for applications. Mosquito spray for applications and aeration, one application. That's just for the park. Total eight thousand eight hundred fifty seven dollars, water tower, they do weed control. Um, total of four hundred and five dollars. Estimated total for greenscape is nine thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars. Compared to Duluth lawn care. Um, apples to apples. Uh, just a little over seventy five hundred for the park and the water tower is five hundred dollars. Estimated total eight thousand nine dollars. Any questions from the council? We use Duluth lawn care. Quite a bit, what was the reason that we brought in? Greenscape, was it, was, wasn't it? Chemicals that they used? I think we are hoping that they were of full. Organic.
Eagle friendly?
Thank you.
Yeah, Duluth lawn care does not do any organic treatments.
And so what is organic? Um, according to, uh, greenscape, is there lawn treatment? Everything else is non-organic, everything else is non-organic. And they're almost. Thirteen hundred dollars a year for.
Question on that though is like. The non-organic weed control for greenscape versus spot spraying. They just look at individual spots and just spraying where the weeds are, not treating the entire place. Is greenscape doing the entire place?
Are you asking if they spot spray for the weed control?
Yeah. So it looks on like the Duluth lawn care looks like it's just spot spraying. Versus greenscape, it looks like the entire place is being covered. Don't wait, is that true?
So both of them, the lawn treatment organic and the fertilizing and weed. Cover everything.
How about the next one down?
That is spraying along the fence lines. So it kills off the grass, so we don't have to have so much lawn maintenance and turning.
Gotcha.
Um, so same with the water tower, that's. That's really what the weed control is there as well as, um, along the fence lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions regarding either of these estimates?
I guess the question for me comes to. Do we want an organic option versus not, and what do you feel towards? What is the cost of that worth?
I have a total curiosity, how did greenscape do, I mean, how did the park look last year to everybody?
I was kind of the one that brought up. The need for mosquito control last year, um, and then that's where the snowballed. Uh, previous year. There were a lot more mosquitoes at the park last year than were not. So it was much better with the fact of being able to be out there and use the parks with my kids. So.
From a mosquito standpoint?
That was my only concern, we went away from that and then went back to it. Um, there was positive.
And when, when Mark says we went away from it, there was one year that the council had decided to not do. The mosquito spray, so that's what he means by we went away from it, it wasn't anything against Duluth lawn care. Um, per se, because I think mosquito control is mosquito control. Um, but we did have that one year and Mark was just noticing that it's in home with red spots all over their bodies. Understandable.
I think they kept, um, applying it, but it raining the, you know, a couple hours after too, was that was really kind of. Watering it down made it a lot pointless to use, because it rained so much that year.
Between, um, Duluth lawn care and greenscape?
No, just the. Just useless after, after pain and it just dissolved into nothing. And so. Higher volume of, uh, mosquitoes too.
I did ask Shane if he had noticed a difference. From one year to the next with the organic treatments, um, didn't really notice anything. But we have been warned that it would take a couple of years before that. That would show if the organic was truly working or not, but. That's just. One person looking.
Thank you.
All right, council, have you asked your questions to be able to make a determination on which estimate? You would like to go with? Say money or organic? I'm ready for. One more question.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on this?
So. For Councilor Hendricks' benefit. On my first year. I. I, I made a commitment to the council to expect that I wouldn't be. Putting forth an affirmative vote for some bad synthetic inputs. And so we kind of get to this point every year and, and kick things around, but most of the, the overwhelming majority. Of the time for the last five years I've abstained and just let the council go where. Last year with greenscape. We had the votes, tried something new and I voted for the affirmative because of it, okay? Um, the mosquito spray again. From year to year, it gets pulled out sometimes, most time it doesn't. And that's fine, so. This year, uh, in keeping with how I've been tracking. I'm going to abstain and let the council decide what they want to do in twenty twenty five. Does that make sense?
Can you explain to the audience on your, your stance and why?
What, my thesis on this overall? Okay, so I, I own a certified organic farm here recently. Um, from the beginning I said I, I'd never vote for the affirmative to put synthetics on the city park, I wouldn't put them on my. That's, that's the background, that's the why.
So I guess my question is. Do you feel whether you vote? Or not, or abstain? Do you feel? That's using organic lawn treatment? Even though the rest is all chemical?
Well, right.
Counts for the increased.
Right, so we've pulled that thread before. Um, the mosquito spray, for example, obviously is not organic. And so. Um. You know, for the, the sake of. The comfort of the citizen at the park, as long as, you know, the, we don't have a really wet year and there's mosquitoes anyway. Right? Um, the only way I would vote. In the affirmative is, is for greenscape, um, but. Right, the, the non-organic weed control, I see your point, isn't the. Isn't organic, right, with greenscape, so again, from year to year, Jamie, it seems like. To me, we're, we're pulling categories every once in a while. And sometimes just can't. Figure out where to land on it and that's why I walk away from it. So I'll let the council, uh, like. In the last five years, just make the determination and how. They want to move forward. Um, the former mayor, um, was, was not opposed to going with. Um, a fully synthetic input at the park, he thought it worked great, it's worked great for many years before I was elected. Um, and so I'll defer to the council to make, to make this decision, but you're right. Um, looking at greenscape's estimate here, um, we do have lawn treatment, um, that is more expensive. Um, the non-organic, um, is. Is much less expensive by granted. Good luck with your decision.
All right, are we ready for motion?
I also want to point out Duluth lawn care is the right snake piece. Better parking. However, I.
Is that your motion?
Sounds like we.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I hear a second or, and I'm sorry. I want to just make sure that. You were in favor of Duluth lawn care at the total estimate of eight thousand nine dollars. Okay, thank you. Thank you, all those in favor of, oh, any further questions, comments? No, okay, all those in favor of going with Duluth lawn care at eight thousand nine dollars, say aye. Aye, in the opposed, say nay.
Aye. Stained.
Thank you. Last, but not least, we have a request to St. Louis County. Uh, for the H R A funds here. Resolution twenty five dash ten requesting grant funds from H R A. Um. For, if, I'm sorry, let me read this, requesting grant funds from St. Louis County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for public infrastructure. Related to a housing development project. And this would be to pave a portion of Stavenger Road due to the developments. That, uh, City of Rice Lake is requiring the developer to pave the road according to Rice Lake City, um, specification. The total estimate for the project, I believe, is fifty thousand, this grant covers twenty thousand. The total estimate for the project, I believe, is $50,000. This grant covers $20,000, leaving $30,000 for the developer to um, make that, make that happen. Um, I just want to remind everybody that as a business-friendly community, we do look, do look for opportunities for grants if they're available to relieve some of those funds that that developer has to um, come up with. For example, our Minnesota Power Project, uh, Rice Lake submitted a grant for 3.1 million to help cover the cost to deliver the city water and sewer out to that new site on Stavner Road. Minnesota Power has to come up with the other half. So this is kind of the same thing. When we're able to, we apply for grants to um, make this business friendly. So that's what this is about. Um, did I miss anything, Tony?
I think you covered everything.
Great, any questions from the council regarding this resolution? Did that answer, there was a question earlier. Did that answer a question?
I was wondering how it was getting paid. Did the golfer stay $30,000 and then you're getting a grant for $20? We look at the taxpayer and.
Yeah, it's a great question. Yeah. Any further questions, comments from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. To approve Resolution 25 dash 10 requesting grant funds. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of approving Resolution 25 dash 10, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. You do not have any unfinished business, and I'll take a motion for determining. Go move. All right, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.